Interesting day today, the fourteenth of October twenty twenty five. And it's our last council meeting for those past four years. It's amazing, we managed to get that far and done a lot of very good work. So thank you to all of you. We have Omidia, thank you for table starts here. And we have also Kim Rabi from Southgrove that will do a presentation. So we will call this meeting to order and do a land acknowledgement. The town of Carstens acknowledges that we are located on traditional Black Food Confederacy territory. We have an agenda. I do not know if you have any additions. If not, we have councillor, do you have an addition?
Motion to...
Don't just hold on a second.
I would like to spend thirty seconds talking about dogs when it gets under questions or whatever.
Okay, under questions is not there, but we'll put it on the... Well, I'll get you to the questions.
Okay, I'm just gonna record what I've been hearing.
Before the committee, okay?
Yeah.
All right, that's good. Councillor Jensen?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition under questions for the council court.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, Kim, you're up. Our first delegation report from Southgrove, an economic development committee we part out. Go ahead.
One of them. Can you hear me? Wonderful. Thank you again for allowing us to present to your council. Before I launch into it, I do just want to make an acknowledgement of thanking councillor Jensen for her participation on our committee in representing the town of Carstens at the Southgrove table. We appreciate it, so thank you. Okay, so... Speech. I'm just kidding. As you may know, Southgrove is a regional economic development alliance of the twenty-nine municipalities in and around the Lethbridge region, over to including the county of Forty Mile, Warner County, and down to the border. So in collaboration with our members and supporters, we proudly enable economic development programs and initiatives that contribute to the growth throughout the region. We have the benefit of a regional economic development alliance of looking a little bit farther afoot so that the good work can happen on the ground in your communities. And hopefully, we've given you tools, resources, and additional capacity to make those projects go further. So some of the accomplishments we've established over our nineteen years in existence has been supporting ongoing multi-year work that again transcends council turnover, provincial government, federal government. We like to say we hold the threat of continuity for some of the economic development that happens throughout the region, not sort of being subject to that electoral cycle. And so we like to enable training sessions, large-scale feasibility studies that have yielded results in our communities. I've already broken. Just gonna pretend that didn't happen. That's okay. So here's a not exhaustive list of some of the projects informing investments that Southgrove has been participant in. A lot of these are in partnership with Alberta Southwest, Economic Development Lethbridge, and other entities across the province. The interesting part about some of these is because we tend to sit at a little bit of a higher level, is oftentimes we will pitch a project that maybe doesn't necessarily feel like it fits, but then two or three years down the road, it becomes incredibly relevant. And one of those examples is our import replacement program that we undertook. So we surveyed nearly two hundred businesses within our region in the supply chain and manufacturing. This was shortly after COVID. We understood the implications of supply chain disruption and thought, I betcha there's manufacturers or distributors in our region that could help offset some of the supply chain disruption. So we interviewed them, got great data, produced a report. At the time, all of them were like, we're not interested in shifting our supply chain. Then comes the most recent tariff environment we find ourselves in. And all of a sudden, we're getting calls continuously coming back to that data to say, who is manufacturing this? Is there a way that we can offset, you know, some of our American imports? Or we were shipping into the US, can we just diversify our own supply line? And those are some of those really rewarding projects that again, maybe don't necessarily fit in the present moment, but we know will yield dividends down the road. So this was our past operational year, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Some of the projects we have carried over because they're multi-year initiatives that haven't quite wrapped. But here's our twenty twenty-four highlights. So after four years of work on EV charging stations, we enabled over two hundred stations and over five million dollars of investment across the province. Our Southern Alberta Economic Summit, which started as a really small event about four years ago, had nearly two hundred attendees in our past year, has been a really, really successful initiative. And the premise of that was to not just have good sessions, learning, resources, happening in places like Calgary and Edmonton. We wanted to make sure that local folks had the ability to access good resources, hear speakers, some thought-provoking initiatives, right here in Lethbridge, because that's the biggest place we could get to. We've also shifted our strategic framework a little bit to help member communities. One of the challenges that I'm going to address earlier was about the lack of community-level economic development. We're starting to see that filter up into a challenge at the regional level as well. And so we undertook a program with NRED, the Northern Regional Economic Development Program, to support our municipalities with community-level support. Some of you may have already been contacted by Michaela, or she will be contacting you soon. We've also been working with the Energy Futures Lab to give policy recommendations on energy policy and sort of keeping rural concerns front of mind. Some of the other issues, I talked about the supply chain project and the affordability housing assessments that we have done. And we're still rebuilding the case for the Southgrove solar project, which again will come up in a minute. So this is our current operational plan. Some of the key things that I want to highlight for you folks around the table are regional training sessions. So these are designed to be very accessible, not cumbersome, entirely virtual. We've committed to hosting six sessions throughout this fiscal year. So our last session was on the defense spending and how our communities and businesses can leverage those federal dollars that we anticipate to be coming down. Our next session is tomorrow at noon on interprovincial trade barriers and how we can leverage some of, or reduce, or advocate to allow some of our local businesses to trade more effectively with our neighbors. The community economic development plans, as I mentioned. Border Wall is another one that could be of interest for the town. So at the last quarterly meeting, the board had allowed us to pursue this opportunity, essentially a tourism project that is sort of leveraging the sense of Canadian pride and a little bit of a tongue-in-cheek relationship with our neighbors to the south. A friendship wall, if you will. Export expansion has something that we've also shifted in. This is something that again became really evident post-COVID and now is even more pressing. We're sort of understanding the real need to diversify our markets. So Peter currently is in Japan on an agri-food tour with Invest in Canada and Export Development Canada, representing the region, trying to cultivate some additional trade partners or opportunities for our local businesses. And then the other initiative that we are undertaking is currently with Economic Development Lethbridge. They're running the program, but we are facilitating what we can in Canada's Western Gateway. So this is a trade and export coalition that really leverages our region as that hub for manufacturing up into the Highway Two corridor, Highway Three, and then down into the US when that becomes a more favorable time. Regional challenges. A lot of these challenges are similar and not a whole bunch is new, but I hope that we're able to move the needle on some of these. Rural sidelining has been an increasingly pressing challenge in that we're seeing a lot of provincial dollars kind of coalescing around urban centers. It's getting harder and harder to advocate for our smaller communities just because the metrics that are being put out are often unattainable for small communities. So whether that's you need to have, you know, a hundred thousand people in your catchment area in order to receive funding, or just tourism is another sort of opportunity that we're seeing a lot of coalition around urban centers in that they just want those like high-value international travelers, multi-day stays, and that's kind of the only place that Travel Alberta is focusing their attention, which is totally fine, provided there's also resources available for smaller communities that are just looking to capture more of a domestic market. I think this community is probably well aware of seeing the shifting visitation patterns. Maybe not as many folks going down to the US, and so there is some increasing pressure put on your visitor economy, but there isn't sort of a commensurate amount of support for that. Some of the other challenges, labor force and housing, fairly ubiquitous across the province, infrastructure and services, and again, community-level support. And I may have spoke about this last time, but back in twenty nineteen, there was about nine economic development officers in the region. There's about two and a half now, and it's just, it's really hard, right? Like budgets are tight, it becomes really difficult to sort of have somebody dedicated to that role. We know it's important, but at the end of the day, it's just, it's a decision that has to be made. And so we're really hoping that with this community economic plans that we're advancing, that you'll then have a good roadmap to execute on, or at least have the ability to justify a position because there is sort of a clear roadmap forward. The immediate opportunities. Southgrove is in the second year of offering a grant support hotline. So essentially, this is a tool that could be used for any community group that comes to you to say, we're looking for a thousand dollars for a barbecue. We have a Boys and Girls Club initiative, there's a Lions Club. Send us, send them our way. We're happy to advise on grants that are available, upcoming intakes, program fit. We won't be able to write the grants for them, but if they are able to, we are happy to revise them, encourage additional support, and kind of some of the tricks of the trade that we've had to learn some hard lessons on. We can pass that on to your groups to sort of make their dollars, or your dollars, go a bit further. We've only had about twelve inquiries this year so far, so please definitely steer your community groups. Or if you have a specific project, maybe on another board that you're looking at, definitely send them our way and we'll be happy to help them out. Community economic development plan is another thing. And then a really, really valuable tool that maybe is on the radar or maybe not. I think the town has done quite a bit of growth. There's a few new businesses around town. And really sort of figuring out what your business retention and expansion plans are through surveying. I believe you're a part, you have a business licensing program. That's a really great resource in which to gather data to reach out to your businesses. It also allows a little bit of level-setting for council to say, what should our priorities be? Is there any immediate barriers that we're inadvertently throwing up to business communities that aren't allowing them to grow? Some of the questions that we talk about in that BRNE survey are just, are you looking to close your business within zero to five years? You know, have you thought about, or in six months? And trying to frame like, is there any fires that, you know, hopefully, council can either address head-on? There's usually low-hanging fruit that comes out of those, and we can't understate how important that data is. And then we go back and do it again in five years, or three years. Yeah, and you can usually see some pretty significant progress throughout that. Light industrial development is also an opportunity, as well as tourism and branding. I think those are all things that you probably know very well. But just to sort of re-highlight some of those things that we see from where we sit. That was quick. Is there any questions for me?
Kim, I'd like to ask you. It has been such a difficult road trying to get funding from the government to keep the economic development regional committees alive.
Yes.
Where are we with that?
We've had meetings with Minister Scow, as he is the new minister for that portfolio. The direction we've been given is that the province isn't willing to change course on the operational funding. And that news means different things to different groups. So for Southgrove, we've had our Sustainability Committee reformed for about eighteen months now, looking at what is going to happen. We have the benefit of being a larger Rita in that our population base allows us a bit more runway than some of the smaller ones that maybe have thirty to forty thousand, because the formula for funding from the province was based on a ratio of what you could leverage from your per capita. So we've had about, I think there's about four opportunities that are kind of immediately in front of us. Southgrove feels pretty good about our ability to weather the storm. It might change how we deliver and what we deliver on, but I don't think there's sort of any imminent risk to the organization. So we've talked about, you know, what does a more strengthened or entrenched partnership with Alberta Southwest look like? Is that something that could happen? Obviously, that's going to be a board decision, but I think the Sustainability Committee has made some hard looks at what tools are actually available to us. The other part is to just, to borrow from Alberta Southwest, their business licensing program is fantastic. It's a great revenue generator, and while that's not usually the primary motive for a business licensing program, but it is something that we've also looked at. The Southgrove solar project, while it's been in various states of development, still exists and is still viable even within the new REM regulations. I can't remember what the acronym is, but essentially, the province has put in a few new pricing structures on how you can sell your power where and locational pricing. We've done a revised business plan for it, and that still has viability. So we're still in negotiations with Prairie's Canon Funding. Once all of that is confirmed, that can still go ahead. And then initiatives like, things like Border Wall. I think that just sort of demonstrates our willingness to be a little bit creative about how to ensure the viability of this organization. I say this as an extremely biased person, but groups like Southgrove are so incredibly viable, are valuable to the small communities, and I do feel like the smaller the community gets, the more value you can get out of...
Southwest.
Yep.
You said, I sit on that.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
The term border wall, I don't like that.
It's a working title. It's just to capture the imagination. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Of course.
It has been a pleasure to work with you. You've done a lot of wonderful work for our community, and we've seen the fruit of it, so...
Of course, and I should have also thanked you, Mayor Cronin, for your service. It's been wonderful to work alongside you, and best of luck, and we will miss you.
Thank you. I was on Alberta Southgrove fifteen years ago for many, many years.
Unreal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna leave all the pieces here.
I'll send you a bill.
All right, councillors, we're going to carry on. We have a little bit of time until our public hearing. We probably can move along quite well. So we have some minutes. For councillor Brown?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of council, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, under five, bylaw and policy. Jeff is going to help us with this one.
So we have three matters related to the land use bylaw tonight. Five A is sixteen forty-seven R. So councillor, you have given first reading to this one, and you have had the public hearing on this one. So this is the Land Use Bylaw Amendment concerning secondary suites in the R1 zoning and also the setback requirements for the Creekside Development. So since the public hearing, we've had no feedback on the matter since that time.
Councillor Court, you had your hand up if you want to do second reading?
I didn't think I could do it, sure. I move a second reading of bylaw, sixteen forty-seven R, the land use bylaw amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you, councillor Brown, you had your hand up.
I move sixteen forty-seven R, be given third and final reading of Land Use Bylaw Amendment.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, we're going to skip B and C because we need to do that after the public hearing. So we're going to go to D, draft a policy, R eight-eight, and Joshua will do that for us. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a three-part Q and A, I guess, to get us over the finish line here. So first, based on the documents you've been provided, there are a couple options that have been made. I did speak with some of you before this meeting. There is an option to, well, first of all, I should say that if you're going to maintain a difference between a member of council and the mayor, there needs to be either an increased rate for mayor participation or a base rate that's applied just to the mayor. Based on the direction we've been given up to this point, we think that's appropriate to continue with that distinction. So I'd like the direction from council, if you would prefer a separate rate for the mayor or to just maintain the base rate.
Go ahead, councillor.
As much as the mayor does a tremendous amount of work, I would be in favor of whatever's going to be best for the mayor, because they do over and above. But I'm not saying all those councillors are lazy, but they do far more than what we do.
Yeah.
True.
All right, so that's one comment. If we look at the table that you have, councillor Remneration, fifteen percent increase scenario. Maybe that is this table, councillors, this table. Help me understand the B option.
Okay, so raise all rates equally would be for your council meeting rate and then your long and short committee rate. Those would all increase so that at the end of it, you would get to that fifteen percent.
Okay, so where does it put the mayor in that the mayor keeps the amount that was originally set? Or does it go up fifteen percent?
For these three rates in your package, they assume that that fifty-four hundred for the mayor is retained. But it would be easy to just create some mayor meeting rates, and then it would be purely participation across the board. And that's fine, that's easy to do in the course of this meeting, we've got lots of time.
Okay, councillors, I won't be there very soon, so you're going to have to kind of think it over, and we need to make a decision. So here is a question. Can we put that mayor on our area at a higher level and keep the B option?
No.
Partly of it?
No, because then the mayor would increase more than everybody else.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, all right. So how many of you would be comfortable with option B?
I have a question, if I can.
Go ahead.
So my question is for, so C. So some of council previously had requested, I don't know if you'd actually requested, councillor Burton, I think you guys, you and councillor Court had brought this up, C in regards to the adding the travel, the hundred dollars extra. The only thing I'm wondering about that is, we already are given mileage. So you're going to be given mileage plus an extra hundred dollars? I don't think, I don't, I'm not loving that. I feel like when we go to these away meetings, which we do, we take our own vehicle, and it's more than, you know, you get the four hours, right? I'm just thinking, we get the mileage. I don't think we need that extra hundred dollars, is what I thought. That was my personal opinion.
So councillor Brown, is option B something that you can live with?
Yes. It was just the C part that I wasn't loving. I didn't like that.
But C is another option.
Agreed, no, agreed, but I just wanted to ask about it.
So let's try to make a decision. Councillor Burton?
So my preference was to have a conversation directly tied to meetings, and none of these scenarios has that. So if that's important enough to wait to another meeting, let's wait. If not, I'm happy to go with B.
Yeah, I honestly think we need to make a decision. So how many of you would feel comfortable with B? Okay, so there is a quorum for that.
Do you guys want something different?
So...
I was happy with C.
Okay.
Same amount, it just looks different.
Yeah.
Well, it's...
Okay, can somebody put a motion forward to accept option B, councillor?
Yeah. Please correct me if I'm wrong here, but your comment has me thinking for a minute, councillor Burton. The idea of, so the idea that committees would only be paid if you attended can still be built into any of these scenarios. So you would just have to decide whether you have a base amount for a set amount of meetings or if you simply need to claim for every single committee meeting. But the compensation for each of those meetings could be any of those options. That's still kind of a second part that needs to be determined. This is just looking for what you would be paid for the meeting, but we would just need to change the wording in the policy to say that there isn't necessarily a... We'd have to amend that base rate if it was just paid for the meetings you went to. Because right now, your compensation is assuming you're attending one four-hour meeting per committee per month. So it's based on that assumption.
But you are compensated...
Okay, please do. Come back and take this from here.
But you are compensated for all the extra meeting for that committee, and you can get a per diem for it. So you are compensated regardless.
So I would just say that any of these options, there is no base rate as a member of council. That has been done away. So as a councillor, you start at zero. And anything you earn throughout the year is based on you submitting a claim.
That's right.
I went to a meeting, I went to a meeting, I went to a meeting. And the only reason we're talking about a base rate is a distinction between mayor and the other members of council. That's all.
Well, that's your base rate you have. Okay, so that is fair enough as a system, but it requires an honor system of the councillors reporting accurately what they have done for work on committees. So it's an honor system. And it will have to be reflected in a report that come to council in a councillor's report for committees. Fair enough?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Are we okay with that?
Sure.
You talk about a report, but they don't submit, they don't get paid. I mean, it's simple. You are trusting that they're not going to be showing up at whatever meeting, but they will not, they will not claim for that meeting.
But if the mayor wants you to give an oral report or written report, that'd be their privilege.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
So if there is a preference, A, B, or C?
It's B.
Seems like we're leaning B. There's also the matter of the benefits as free passes. So there was definitely disagreement about that last meeting. So we'd like direction as to what way to go, whether that would be retained. So the pace of earning those passes was one person for one day, you would earn at a rate of every two months. So that's twenty-four over a four-year term. And that number can go up or down, or that can be withdrawn.
Okay, councillors, is there an appetite here?
Yeah, I was just wondering. Okay, so that pass, does that include the golf course? And swimming pool and...
Any recs.
Yeah, it's rain, but any facilities.
The value dollar-wise is not the same.
Yeah, but you have to make sure of it up to use it the way you want.
If you use it for four years, it's six a year, basically.
It's not really a matter of value, it's a matter of being able to access those facilities. It doesn't have a monetary kind of end-of-the-line figure. Okay, so are we ready to vote on option B? If so, please make it known, somebody.
Do I have to say the motion?
Yes, you need a motion to do it.
This one, you is not ready.
Councillor Granger, why don't you do that for us?
Because he doesn't want to vote for B.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm not stuck on it.
Yeah, sure, because each of the three options includes those benefits. So if you don't want them, you wouldn't want to make a motion to accept one of these documents.
So. I was. It had been mentioned by a couple of you last time, the hesitation to take the. The bonus, I'll call it. And I understand Counselor Brown's reason for putting it forward, that those are offered. And I'd asked the question last time, offered in other communities, so she's not inventing a wheel here. And I appreciate her thinking through that. Um, I asked last meeting if employees get any kind of perk like that and they don't.
They have the golf course.
Right, you mentioned that, but other than that, so. You know, I, like I mentioned before, I didn't take a jacket thing. I'm just so hesitant of anybody thinking that. Somehow we're, have taken a step up a ladder that that my preference, I could support either, but my preference would be.
Without the pass, okay, all right. Okay, how many will feel without the pass? I can live without the pass. Okay, all right, so we need to amend. We need to do an amendment to this, uh, policy. Okay, can you bring it afterwards? Fine, thank you so much. So that'll be B without the perks. All right. Uh, we have a draft policy, P thirty-five. Project proposals policy, that is something that I had asked Jeff to kind of work on, similar to what we had for. Other donations. And, uh, I think the document's very good.
So you you saw the CCW council, we have not made any amendments to it since CCW. So again, just to recap, this was just capital projects policy, it's now been included. It's now been amended to include large events. The same analysis is still required, so looking at the cost, the participation, the life cycle of the event. And, uh, administration makes an opinion and then brings that to council, or any committee also is required, so same. Same process for capital, we've just added large-scale operation. I'm ready to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
I would move that we, um, adopt. Council policy C thirty-five, capital projects proposals as presented.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, all in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, on the draft policy F twenty-dash-eighteen, fees and charges policies, there were some. Uh, minor changes that were done there.
Those are good.
And, uh, yeah, I think they're really good, that kind of tidies up a little bit, the question we had all along. Uh, all term, and I think that finally clears that up. So. Anybody ready to make a motion?
I don't wanna make a motion, but we have a cabin that we rent out. It says cabin. We have a cabin down there.
The old, uh, what did we call it? It was where you checked into the campground years ago. So now it's a little self-contained cabin you can rent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, Ryan, our, our facilities manager here, did some rentals on it over the summer and so it'll be ready to go.
Well, a good, good catch, councillor.
Yeah, that is new. Thank you.
Rent the cabins, I guess.
So I move that we adopt policy F twenty-eighteen. As.
Eighteen. For the new ones eighteen.
As presented.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. Now, the next one, tax penalty waiver request. So that's a further thing from CCW. Go ahead, Jeff.
If I could just speak to that quick, and I want to apologize, we could have presented this a little simpler at the last meeting. After the meeting, Jill and I were talking and then. Recalling that, uh, you actually, your council, bylaw sixteen sixty-two, you made an amendment where if. Someone had penalties at the end of the year, but would pay everything, including the penalties, and go on the tip program. We would keep those on the books and if they successfully made all their payments over the course of that year, we would waive them at the end of the next year. Um, which. By the way, could very much be applied to this current situation. The only thing we would need from council in this situation is. This all happened after the July deadline, so in the bylaw, you have to do all that by July. And this is later, so. If there's an appetite of council to, uh, satisfy the request of the proponent, our recommendation, it would simply be to waive the, uh. July deadline and allow them to go on the tip program and waive the penalty if they're successful in all their payments. Next year.
They are on a tip program.
They already are, yeah, they've done all of that. They've paid the penalty, they went on the tip program. They did everything the bylaw was contemplating, except not on the deadline.
Okay, so Jeff, if I understand properly, the wave, the waving of the penalty happens only after one year.
They make twelve months of payments, correct?
Correct, yes, thank you. Counselor Burton?
So I, just as a follow-up, I had raised the issue of the statement of adjustments at our last meeting. Which I thought it was very important and it, and I knew that Glenda would not miss that. So, um, she didn't. And, but it looks like it was sent to a wrong address. And that really is the document that. Yes, you, the lawyer can tell them things, but that's the document that shows what that they owe it and what they owe, so. I think that's an important thing, that they didn't get it. Through no, no mistake of their own. So I'd, I'd be willing to.
Make that motion.
Grant clemency, you know, according to our.
Yeah.
Counselor Burton, go for it. Could you?
I think Counselor Granger has a comment.
Oh, go ahead, councillor.
So, yeah, I've been. Over the course of the four years, I've sort of been. No, that's your word, not mine. But I, I believe that we, we have bylaws, we need to follow the bylaws. I've always said that and I. Don't have often a lot of sympathy. So do we, do we know, cuz you mentioned it a second ago, do we know why it got sent to the wrong address?
Makes no difference to us.
Well.
Makes no difference to us, that's what happened, it's a fact.
What they say is that. It ju- just was a wrong address given.
Well, did the lawyer make that error?
I don't know that we'll ever know.
He, part of me says. You know, the lawyer messed up, the lawyer should pay us, not the taxpayers of the town.
We don't know who's wrong address.
You know, honestly. We can't figure all that detail. Or we leave clemency as Counselor Burton says, or we don't. In that case, we have a bylaw in place that allows us to do that. The clemency will be in allowing for that bylaw to take effect. After the deadline of July.
I'll make a motion, but do you want it to be outright, or do you want it to be the deadline? Does it matter?
It says right there what you ask.
I think the motion can be, in fact, Mayor, I wish I could go back in what you just said, but it was essentially that you will allow for the. For the waiver implicit in the bylaw with the extension on the penalty date. To be later than July first. And I, I think that would satisfy it.
Waive the application deadline then?
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Okay, you want to go for it?
Yeah, I will make a motion to, um. Waive the application deadline in bylaw sixteen sixty-two for their, do you want their address? For the request from eight thirty-nine Second Street West to satisfy. This.
Ready to watch?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm ready.
All right, so any other question, comments? Make up your mind, councillors, all in favor?
Get at it.
Councillor, I'm proud of you.
Wow, wow.
Okay, all right. Yeah. You could be surprised yet, Counselor Brown.
I'm very surprised.
All right. Now, we had some recommendation and business arising from CCW meeting. So we can truck through those councillors. Uh, by way of resolutions, so the county letter of support re, uh, the bears a reoccurrence of them coming closer and closer to town. And, uh, would be, uh, resolution that we need to accept that letter to be sent.
Mayor, if I might, there's three resolutions at the end of the RFD.
Yes.
On all three items and making the resolution directs administration to send the letter, so I think that would be implicit. Unless anyone takes exception to the letter as drafted, we can amend that certainly.
Okay. Uh, I think, are you trying to say that we do it for the three of them?
Well, I'm saying there's three separate motions.
Okay, so that's what I understood. Yeah, go ahead.
So I make a motion to inform the Kurdistan District Health Foundation that the town declines the donation application. And that they should contact the Kurdistan Auxiliary for possible funding.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so Festival of Light donation, somebody has a. Go ahead, Counselor Court.
I make a motion, put together a matching grant of up to twenty-five hundred dollars. From existing funds for the Festival of Lights Committee for Fireworks for twenty twenty-five event. Expressing the town's gratitude for the work the committee does to beautify the community and bring economic growth. The twenty-five hundred, if needed, will come from account. Two dash twelve dash five oh four. As an aside, they were out working like crazy.
I know, everywhere, councillor.
Does this include them showing how they got the funds? Because I had the concern. We've already donated. And they're just gonna show they got twenty-five hundred from us to get another twenty-five hundred from us? Which I'm fine supporting, I just.
Awarding.
If I were to be in their shoes, I would just do that.
Councillors?
No one's concerned about it. I don't think they would do that, maybe they won't, but.
But.
Anyways, that's my opinion.
Just to be fair, though, anytime the town gives money to anyone, they have to then show.
What they did.
The accountability, right? So there has to be a report, so we will see back a report.
Yeah, cuz we added that.
For them to get.
We did, it's in the policy.
The additional, they're gonna have to show where they rate, like, they don't have to show where, where they're raising that until after the fact. Then they'll say thanks for the five.
And they said what you said.
Don't feel they'll do it, I'm just saying.
No, Councillor Kenley, you have a point, but I don't know at this time.
I, I think Counselor Brown's point is right. They have, any money that we give them, they have to show where it went, and if they show it, do we invest? Then that's the last time to get money, I don't think.
That's right. There's not much you can do about that part. Okay. I know it's maybe not satisfying you completely, Councillor Kenley, but.
I don't have any issues at all, I'm just.
No, I mean, it's a fair question. It's a fair question for accountability, no doubt. All in favor? Thank you. All right, now the last one for the best.
I move to direct administration to write a letter of support for the letters. Of Carson County, addressing to the same parties affirming the town's wherewithal problem, agreeing that something needs to be done. And I thought the letter in here is excellent.
Very good, yeah. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right. Now, the next one is a little bit more complicated. Six B, the follow-up from the previous de- delegation from, uh, um, Jean Beemy. I really thought of it all. You have the figures in your pocket, you have, and you understand the issue. To me, there is two things that we need to kind of recall. One, that he did all possible to make sure that he had the meter and that. His obligation was set. The other one is that in his letter, he refers to the fact that he did not get. An invoice and, uh. Ever was aware of his issue. And the town is willing to accept it, have a part of responsibility in the matter. So my personal opinion is. We should waive the garbage and the sewer, that should be an obvious. But I also think that. To show some goodwill. For the mistakes that was made at all and all. But the fact that he still used the water. Is maybe to reduce that amount to five thousand dollars. Because had the town. Given him the heads up on this one. He would have. Stopped using that much water. And so, yes, the bylaw allows him to only, uh, be penalized or have to repay one year. And which mean that he was given. Uh, a year, uh. Without having to pay. But there again. He, he does not reject the fact that he has to pay, never did. What is asking is for us to consider the fact that had he known ahead of time. He would not have had. To use the amount of water it did, he would have adjusted that consumption. And he couldn't because he did not know.
I agree with everything that you've said, absolutely. Uh, and the town is culpable in, in this matter, so. And the part I don't agree with is, is that I think five thousand is too much, I think we should reduce it even more. He talked about a hundred and thirty dollars a month, which was. I understand a historically old policy. I thi- I think that in his mind, he. You know, like, and he admits what happened here, he's willing to pay for the water that he u- he used. But for all the thing, the reasons that you said. There should be some leniency here. And I think that we should do what we can to, to lower the number. I think five thousand is too much.
Counselor Burton?
So I think that, to help, in my mind, to see the difference between this and decisions that we've made fairly recently about water. So. In the prior case. Not one, but two of our bylaws were breached by the applicant or his agent. And if you'll forgive the pun, everything flowed from that. Right? It just did. Everything, all the he said, she said. All the problem, the free water, all of it flowed from those two breaches. In this case, we have the exact opposite. We have where he complied with the bylaw. Did notify us and somewhere in our wheel, it was missing a cog. And I think that part is completely on us. And I, again, like I said, I believe the last applicant, I believe this applicant, I know him extremely well. And if he tells us he wouldn't have continued to use the water at that rate, he wouldn't have, that's just a fact. So I agree with everything the mayor said, I agree with what Counselor Granger said, I would, I would cut it in half if it were me. I think that it really, if I say, well, where did this problem flow from? It flowed from our mistake.
Uh, I agree, I can disagree with you, it's correct.
And yes, he used the water, but he, he just. Nobody would have used it at eight thousand dollars a year worth. Or more, whatever it came to, it just wouldn't have happened.
Agree a hundred percent, um. That that five thousand should be twenty-five hundred tops. And, um.
Well, aren't, sorry, aren't we at seven?
Yeah.
Seventy-six hundred?
Yeah, that's, no.
So I, I would.
A little light.
Well, sir, I misunderstood what you were saying.
If I could just add something, Mayor, this, it's important to remember too, there's, there's two pieces of this. There's the water use, which you've discussed very well. And then there's, by default, there's a garbage end recycling and sewer charge on here. Which NMAC's put on by default, but administratively, we're saying that's probably not a reasonable charge, given the nature of the property. So that's between the two of them, it's approximately nine hundred dollars between, uh, sewer and then garbage and recycling. It's about nine hundred dollars.
What I'm suggesting then, thank you for that clarification. So I agree with the mayor's comments to get rid of the garbage and sewer. And again, they are paying garbage and sewer at their other property. And we're not doing garbage and sewer at this property. So I would waive that part and whatever the water bill was, I would cut it in half. I don't, I don't know how much it is, but whatever it is. I, I think so much of that comes from us. But we're the problem in this picture.
So. So what's a reasonable amount? That he's agreed to pay? That's really what we're talking about is, and I, I. I'd like somebody to calculate a number for me. But.
I'll give you a picture.
Five thousand.
You're looking at about thirty-five hundred bucks, thirty-six, thirty-four?
If you take off the garbage. So you had seventy-six and then minus the nine hundred. So just water, sorry, if I could use my calculator correctly here.
Sixty-six, sixty-five, thirty-two, five.
It was about sixty-seven, twenty-seven. Sixty-seven hundred and twenty-seven when you back out garbage, sewer, recycling.
What's that divided by two?
Divided by two.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, sixty-three.
I see.
Okay, let's say it's thirty-five hundred and call it a good day.
Thirty-one?
Thirty-five, just round it up.
Too high. Because a hundred and thirty, I did this calculation, if the hundred and thirty dollars a month has any validity, it used to. It's like twenty-six hundred bucks, so I think.
Yeah, but you have to also ac- account for the fact that no matter what. Had you used the water for two years, then you're talking double that amount, correct? It's already given a year free.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Because, yeah, I. I hear what you're saying in regards to the previous one, that I voted a, for and y'all voted against. This, not everyone, some of us voted for, some of us voted against. And it, it is different than this. I don't disagree. I don't, I don't disagree. But my favorite saying of councillor Burton to the last person we talked to was, was when he said. Um, you expect the town residents to pay for your water, your, I think that's essentially what you said. And so, no, just. And so for this, so for this, I'm hearing the mayor say, you know, we've got seven thousand six hundred owing. Taking ownership as the town that this is, this is some of our bad. He still did use the water though. So I'm not forgiving him a, a buy. I think thirty-five hundred is. The lowest I would be willing to go on this.
In summary, this, I'm trying to read this and put it in my head. What's the town's fault in this? Like ultimately? Can you just explain it in layman's terms here? This is jumbled.
So Mr. Baybee got a meter. And it's installed in, in that property cuz there's no improvement, it's in a vault. Um, underground, and the billing never commenced on the property.
They never read.
Because of what, is he's, he's.
Yeah, so what, there was a malfunction at the junction somewhere between the installation of the meter. And coming back to our office to tell NMACs to commence billing on the property and give them a meter number and give them a site ID. So those are the things that happen. We call in and say, hey, there's a new site, here's a site ID, here's a meter number that's attached to that site ID, commence billing. That part didn't happen. So this work order sat in the office this whole time. And then Jill's been trying to go through some things and tidy up a few things, and this has come to light.
Councillor Burton.
So when I look at that, there's only two parties that could be culpable. There's the Baymies or the town. And it sounds like it's not the Baymies.
Uh, a- aside from, I'm stretching here a bit, councillor, but hear me out. Aside from saying. When you got your next bill and didn't look at your consumption, you have some responsibility. Well, but you still get a bill.
I didn't look at my bill. There's no difference.
No, okay, so.
There is no difference. I gotta pay automatically. I'm not looking at my bill. I don't, the other person, I pay automatically, I'm not looking at my.
But I accepted that the other person didn't look at his bill. I believed him when I expressly said, I believe you, you didn't look at your bill. To me, the, the, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm trying to clarify. To me. When I look at the other situation, everything stemmed from, from that party. Breaching two of our things, and then we didn't do anything wrong after that. There was a breach and that's what caused the problem in this one. It sounds like the problem where, you know, which wheel was missing in the cog, it's us. Somehow, it sat on a desk or in a file cabinet and never got over to NMACs. And it's us that caused that problem. So in both cases, I, I accept they didn't read their meter.
From both parties on this one.
So here is the thing that he said. He even said. That to him, the amount seems low in his NMACs bill. And he even said, sounds like the, the billing was low. And he mentioned that, that he came here and said.
Yeah, he came here in twenty-two and said.
Sorry. Anyways.
Fifty dollars after that, so that's why he assumed the fifty dollars is going up.
And what did he say? He said. I was surprised that Calston was selling water at such a low rate, didn't he? And he didn't give it another thought.
I guess, that's the way I would look at it. What more, what more could he have done?
Okay, guys, before I die on this.
Other than I can say, I'm fine with waiving the water, I mean, not the water. The sewer charges and going fifty percent on what's owing on the water.
Alright, so essentially, can we go thirty-five hundred, uh, to round it off? To make it a run number? Okay, how many of you can live with that?
I can live with it. I think it should be higher, but I can live with thirty-five.
Uh, uh, offered five thousand, you went through thirty-five hundred.
Going once.
So. Alright, so I need a motion to, please go ahead.
Okay, so I make a motion that, um, the town of Curdston. Um, waive the sewer and garbage fee. For Jean Baymy's property. And that the amount owing for water that was used be three thousand five hundred.
Thank you. All in favor? Alright.
Yeah, could I, can I ask a question now that we passed up? So. Would it be helpful to, to? All the way through, he kept thinking he had this other rate available. We may just wanna mention to him that it's not available.
Uh, councillor Burton, I made it clear to Jean that that is not a possible option. Not now, nor in the future.
And then, my other comment is. Do we feel like we've tightened our process? Regarding.
Yeah, we need to do something about that. We don't want that to happen again.
I mean, right, right from, we don't want people putting their own meters in, or sorry, not own meters, we don't want people hooking up. All the things that we've seen here, and you know what, I can understand it can cause hard feelings, no matter what position we take. We just wanna make sure that. Our wheels are turning tightly and smoothly.
Councillor Granger?
One of the other things he said was that he seems to be aware, and we're not. That there's a bunch of other rural farm hydrant properties out there that may not be metered at all. And I think we need to, to look into that as well.
So a couple of things, and then this will time out about perfectly for the public hearing. Um, so we proceeded to talk with the Park Enterprises about making the meter installation a condition of occupancy permit. Um, so that's caught at the permitting level. Um, as far as the other councillor Granger, we know, we asked Mr. Baymy the two properties he thought were that case. Both of those properties have meters associated with them. Um, but also, and just as a nuance, there, both of those properties have access to raw water as well.
Yeah.
And so, they might have some hydrants connected to raw water. That I don't know for certain. But we do know there are meters associated with those properties for potable. And so, you are seeing a few of these right now, council, because Caitlin and Jill are. Working hard to clean up some things and they're working with NMACs to take care of a lot of these that are outstanding. We, we think this is a temporary spike in these types of issues and then, and then things calm back down. There's just been some. That have been hanging out there for a while that have come to our attention.
That's all good. So, Jeff, we've, we've dealt with, from the consumer. To the, the meter, we've dealt with that. And are they on a meter? Have they put in the meter with part? And then, do we have a clear process that then gets it over to NMACs?
Well, that process should, it's been there. And that should always be in place. That, that's simply just, uh, something happened, that's right. Something fell behind the desk, something fell in a folder. And we just have to be more careful on that for certain.
Alright, um, councillors, we hitting six o'clock, which is a time of our public hearing. And so we need a motion to go into public hearing at this point, councillor Granger.
I would move that we, um, go into, uh, public hearing mode. Do we need the number?
No, it's okay, just proceed to public hearing.
Proceed to public hearing. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Give us one minute, uh, remember as per the MGA, we have to make sure that this is available publicly, uh, virtually, I should say. Uh, so, and apparently there is someone waiting to join virtually. So, Shem, we need to change this screen to. A minute, change over.
So that last exercise shows why judges don't always agree on the same facts, right? Right, if you have three judges, they'll get a two to one decision, that's why. You just see the facts differently.
You know, it's just tricky.
It's always someone famous in town's vote, so I wanna know why it's a town's vote.
You have something downstairs when we eat, come around the table, you will see.
I'll talk to you later.
I wish it was.
Right, me too. Thanks councillor.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor.
Alright.
You only need one signature.
It's like, whoa.
Jeff, you only need one signature, you don't need, uh, do you need me to initiate the page now?
No, no, it's not minutes, it's okay.
Okay, alright, there you go.
Okay, Hashem, are we ready electronically? Yeah, alright, mayor.
Alright, so here we have. A public hearing to hear two matters. Uh, one, it's a land use bylaw amendment by law. Sixteen forty-seven S. Has to do with rezoning. Jeff, do you want to take it away?
Yes, so councillor, you have something somewhat unique here, is that we're doing two bylaws in one public hearing, which is, which is okay by the MGA. We advertise them together, both relatively minor, in my opinion. Um, so the first one we'll deal with is, uh, sixteen forty-seven S, so sixteen forty-seven is your land use bylaw. We're nearing the end of the alphabet for amendments on this one. We'll make some big decisions on what we do there. The, the summarized discussion here is this is redesignating or rezoning lands. Um, the, uh, let me see here. The detailed. Definition is its portions of lot fifteen, block thirty-eight, plan one, one, two, three, nine, two, nine, three, eight. But, more generally, we're talking about the parcel that's immediately south of the soccer park. Which, if you go up there now, it's our old laydown yard. And then it's a parcel immediately south of that. So, the parcel immediately south of the soccer park is proposed to be rezoned to public and institutional. The parcel's immediately south of that, which is just where the end of the town-owned land goes is, uh. Proposed to be designated as general industrial. Now, this is to accommodate on the public and institutional, the proposed Francophone school site. You will recognize, councillor, there's a lot of work to be done before that's settled. But, um, we wanted to get that parcel rezoned. Partly in an effort to show the Francophone school that there was some movement on this, and also that it was going to show the next council. That this council, if you are, was supportive of that change. So it's, it's partly that. I am actually not recommending, uh, further readings of this after the public hearing. I think we got a lot of work to do to get to the finish line, and so I'm not recommending any further readings. But I did want to get the public hearing done and, and to show that. So. Uh, the purpose, right now, for the general industrial lot south of that as well is. It's an effort to try and recoup costs to extend utilities to the school. So as you know, we're, we have a considerable potential cost to extend utilities. To a non-taxpaying entity. And so, while it's a beneficial entity in the community, I'm not arguing that. We, we don't have a lot of cost recovery. We don't have a lot of, uh, return on investment there. And so if we can, uh, service and sell some of these. General industrial lots, we have the opportunity to recoup some of our utility costs. And so that was the theory there. So, I'll, I'll pause, mayor, because we're dealing with two. That's everything I would have to say on sixteen forty-seven S. And then we can deal with fifteen seventy-three after.
Go ahead.
So that, general industrial, is that the same zoning as we have on the west end on those lots?
Ooh, I can tell you that exactly here, if you'd give me just thirty seconds to pull it up. I, I believe so, but I don't wanna tell you a story here and I can pull it up quite quickly.
Well, I guess more my question is why, why that zoning in particular, is it just fairly broad in what can go there and?
Yeah, and it's not immediately, the other option, in fact, I can, I can see right here. Uh, the ones on the west are highway commercial, and these are not an immediate proximity to the highway. So they would.
This one just gives the most options. Business zonings.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, the other ones, as I look, are highway commercial.
And sometimes those are a little more restrictive, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I'm just confirming, it's the twos, that you said south and south, but it's, it's like, there's two lots there, no? Or is it one big lot?
No, it's actually already broken up, um, there's actually three lots there technically.
Yeah.
So there's, there's immediately south of the soccer field, it runs right along it, and that's one piece.
Like rectangle?
Yep, and then there's two square pieces immediately south.
Can I ask what the other one is? Is that just, that's not it? In the, in this discussion, maybe I don't need.
Oh, that, they're, they've literally been grazing pasture to this point. We haven't used them for anything.
I, I think maybe the bigger issue is that there's an underlying area structure plan that this doesn't go with, so. I made the point before, but just cuz I won't be here to make it when the time comes. We really need to redo that underlying. We now have a, a round peg and a square hole thing going on. So we just need to fix all that up.
Yeah.
And this doesn't go the distance, this is part of it, but. In an ideal situation, you'd do it the other way. You'd do the area structure plan first. Then you'd rezone this to fit the ASP. You're doing it backwards, and I, I think it makes sense to do it backwards, but.
And if I might, mayor, it's also why I'm not recommending any more readings on it. Is, is we'll do that, and the fact is, before second reading, we may have had enough work on the area structure plan that this is amended.
Yep.
This could be different. So I see them as moving concurrently here. Um, I hope it speeds up the pace of the area structure plan, because this is also contingent on.
Pace is zero right now.
And he, and he speed up.
He speed is better, yeah.
Okay, I don't see. Is there anybody in the gallery that want to speak in favor of this amendment?
Or, or against?
Or against, but we start with in favor normally? No? Against? No? I don't see anybody on, uh, Zoom. Alright, so go ahead for the next one.
So the next one is, uh, as councillor Bird mentioned, fifteen seventy-three B. Now, uh, keep in mind, councillor, this was to commence the re, what do, what do we wanna call it? It'll, it'll start the process for looking at the east area structure plan, and so. Um, this will, will have a, a number of public input sessions. We have to meet with all the landowners that are affected and all those kinds of things. So these two do go hand in hand, in my opinion. This is, um. Just one second, there was a phrase I was going for, just a second. Um, so on this section closest to this, we're essentially taking out all of what, all the area structure plan that was there. We're retaining it in the further south sections. Um, and then it'll be renegotiated as we start meeting with landowners over the next little while. So this is another one that I'm not recommending further readings on. I would just recommend we stay at first reading. Until we have a chance to work with the community.
Thank you very much. So there again, is there somebody wanting to speak in favor of this? Uh, bylaw? Let's see, east area structure plan? Things none, against? Things none, against? No one? Alright, so we will, we will come out of the public hearing and we come into a regular meeting.
I love that we, uh.
We used to adjourn the public hearing.
Come out of public hearing?
I turn, are in favor? Thank you.
And you're, we're good just to pick up now.
Okay, so, the next one, we go on the six C, council orientation resolution. Jeff has a very interesting conundrum, has an administrator, to play around with all the new rules of the province. And the deadline that we have to meet ourselves.
Yeah, I'm asking council for a resolution to offer an extension on the mandatory training timeline that's given in the MGA. Um, the, there's been brisk debate amongst, uh, CAOs about this recently, and about how it's quite poorly worded. Within the MGA. Um, what the MGA effectively says is, unless you're done your part B training, you can't hold a regular council meeting. But, the council can also make a resolution to extend that by ninety days. But it wouldn't seem obvious that the next council, who's not allowed to meet until they've done the training, can make a motion to extend by ninety days. So, again, they, the, the timelines in the mandatory training aren't great, but we're gonna make it work. So, I'm asking if this council will make a resolution to extend the time for orientation training by ninety days as per section two oh one one.
Hey, I had to hand up, Counselor Brown was going to do that for us.
I would love it. Um, a resolution of council to extend the time for orientation training by ninety days. As per section two oh one dash one of the MGA.
Thank you.
I love the ways a municipal affair works.
Yes.
Absolutely wonderful. All in favor? Thank you, I'm so sorry.
But true.
Alright, under six D Alberta Community Partnership Grant Resolution, Jeff, do you want to talk to that?
Plus, you, you know this backstory, we're applying to the province for an Alberta Community Partnership Grant on the best practices for the library study. Uh, that grant, I've got it mostly done, it's due by the end of the month. Uh, but one of the requirements, uh, in that is that the partners have a resolution of council to support it, so. I actually, I have a letter from the county supporting it, but I've asked Murray at their next meeting to actually get a resolution of the council to support it. So, I am asking a motion of council to support that grant.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to support the Alberta Community Partnership Grant, uh, application for the best practice study of the library.
Thank you, Rob said, are in, are in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're doing very well. Let's, uh, carry on with the committee, committees and other reports.
Are you gonna allow me to speak?
Oh, the question, yes. And I, I wrote questions.
It's come to my attention two or three times the last week or two of roaming dogs and causing problems for people that are walking their dogs. Uh, I don't know, we can't have twenty four hour surveillance, I understand that. But if people, if we could encourage people to report these dogs, so that our bylaw officer can take care of them. So, there's at least two cases where I've been approached in the last week.
Okay, so, to carry on with what you're saying, I got myself. Really near killing a dog and it, I frightened me to death. It was on Main Street. There was a group of children from our town with a dog that was not on a leash. That dog must have an aversion to red cars. The minute I came, it lounged on the middle, and honestly, just about, I was praying to God not to kill him. And it, it frightened me so badly, I was thinking, why would the kids not have a dog on a leash?
It's not just kids, yeah.
Now, today was another story on the second, uh, second half. On the, on the east side. A dog was running on the front of a car. And I was thinking, it's nuts. Finally, the owner of the car kinda pulled on the side so the traffic could go by, but the dog would not change his mind. He carried on. Going on the front of that car.
That's what I mean by.
And I'm thinking, that drives me nuts when I see stuff like that, it's so dangerous. You know? Anyways. I hear you. Go ahead.
So, I live on the east hill and, uh, lived there eight years. And every year, the stray dogs, the loose dogs gets worse and worse. And, um, just this last ten days. There's been four stray dogs loose. And, um. Just appear out of nowhere. I've got my three basset hounds in, in, in the caged area, uh, dog run. These stray dogs are coming right up to the fence, growling, snarling, my basset's are going crazy. And, so my question is after hours, and, and, you know, I, I thought, well, I need to phone. Bylaw, animal control, for them to come right up here and grab these dogs. And it's, it's just happening so more often than, than it used to. So, after hours, what is a citizen to do?
With the police?
I can speak to.
Yeah.
If it's a dangerous situation, you phone the police.
Well, I don't think this was dangerous, but it was noisy.
Just a nuisance.
Irritating and obviously irresponsible owners of these, these dogs. Two of them, two, two of the cases was the same dog, three nights apart. So, somebody's letting their dog in our neighborhood loose, got a collar, couldn't get close enough to it to see it had a tag. And then the other two were, you know, basically, you know, total strays.
Yeah.
But it's happening more often, and that's probably what you're hearing, right?
Yeah, when I'm over there hearing, people are starting to carry dogs free, cuz it's, they walk the trail or something, they don't know what they're gonna run into, so it's. And I see guys on the trail, just turn them loose, let them run.
And today, a guy pulls up to the, where that bench is right on, on the hill, you know, that you can see from your place, I can see from my place. And the guy gets out of the vehicle and lets the dog out, while he sits on the bench and the dog is running around loose. My guys are going crazy again, cuz they can see this, and I, I thought I should go over and get his license plate number and report him. And by the time I got my coat on to walk over, he'd gone.
If only we had a dog park.
Yeah, okay. Counselor, Counselor Brown?
Um, no, I was just gonna say, this is a Jeff question, is our pound full?
No, no.
Perfect, so that is the biggest thing that we can do, is people start calling, start calling, you see it. Start calling, cuz there for a little bit, our pound was full and we could not take anymore, and so we were telling the residents not to. And so, I think it's really important, and maybe we need to direct administration to do a, a social media post. Let's, I, I would like to direct administration to put out a social media post. In regards to, um, if you see a dog that is not on collar. Uh, or a stray dog, please call our, um, our bylaw officer.
Well, not only that, but they, you're.
That's my motion.
Owner dogs need to keep their dogs on a leash.
I agree, no, I agree, and am I part B of this, baby? Part B of, or just onto that, Hashem, we're gonna slash, we're just gonna add to that, that, that just also reminding residents. To please keep your animals inside or on leash if they're outside, period, unless they are in our lovely dog park.
Including cats. And could I ask the media to report and publish in the next issue, this discussion? Thank you.
You can do all you want.
Alright, counselors, thank you for those, uh, questions.
You support her, yeah.
We have a motion, are in favor? Okay, alright, so let's go to committee reports. There is, uh, quite a few reports, not too many, but.
Just a couple there, Mayor.
What did I miss? CPO report?
You went to question, you missed seven, but that's okay, we're there now.
No, that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing right now.
Yep.
No?
Sure.
There's a CPO report? Do you want to talk about the CPO report? It's always well done and well written and very informative, and Leo does a super job.
I did have a question on the CPO report. So, we had, there's a paragraph in here where he says. Um, I, he's talking about Septed, he says, I received reports from business owners that the improvements they have made to their businesses are working. But to hear that anything's working on Main Street makes me really happy, so. What, what do we do for budget there? I know we had some budget, and I think we chewed through it, our Septed budget.
Yeah. Uh, so you had actually, oh, now you, now I had a number, and now you're making me second guest counselor, but. We didn't go through it all because one of the bigger applicants hasn't submitted receipts yet.
Okay.
So, we.
But, but potentially we have.
Uh, we'd still have a little, we'd still have a little bit left there. Um, and I know there's a couple businesses working on some applications as well, now obviously that's gonna restart here in sixty days.
Yeah.
Um, or so, seventy days. But, um, counselor, I'll look at it at the break, I had in my head, we had twenty five thousand for this year in there.
I didn't think it was.
And I think we've used about half.
Thought ten was a little too, but.
Okay.
I guess my point is that it sounds like it's working, so let's keep some oil on that. That one, make sure it keeps turning.
Yeah, we'll carry it forward, and we'll have that discussion next month.
Alright, the development report gives you a sense of how many houses were built, and how many businesses, uh. Improved their, their, uh, areas. So, you can see it's pretty similar in the numbers, year to year as what it was last year.
First year here was zero.
Agreed.
Right, and so, we're doing better than we ever did in a long time to have, uh, even full house every year. Last year, this year, it's a good sign of businesses that have improved quite a bit, it's great. Alright, now the committee report. Counselor Granger and Counselor Brown, I have a question for you. Okay, this is about the, uh, the fire emergency services. In the report, in a minute of, uh, September fourth, twenty twenty five, I read the following. Danny Melvin advised that there has been an oven built in the back of someone's property within the town of Cartston. Danny is concerned about the safety of the oven. The town of Cartston board members will investigate. I found that rather interesting, you guys going to investigate? Do you know what you're investigating?
Not us, we weren't investigating it.
Yeah, of course not, but it's a weird thing, I would have asked for correction of those minutes.
Yes, in everything else he said, but I don't know what you were doing in your spare time, but I have not checked out, that wasn't something we were checking out. That was.
The pizza oven?
That was a pizza oven, and that was, so the question was, they were worried that it's a, a fire hazard. Counselor, do you remember when we were talking about it? It was that it was a fire hazard that this one, we have a few of them in the town of Cartston, of people having pizza ovens in their backyard. And, but for this situation, it was that this one, they were worried that it's extreme heat. And that it was, um, it was way more out of control than the other ones, the other ones. It's like a kiln.
So, my question to that, to the board, to the committee, was, A, is this allowed as a, in a residential use? The quest, the answer was kind of fuzzy. Um, and. I mean, I think that's an important question that should be answered, but. He seemed to be aware of it, keeps an eye on it, uh, that didn't satisfy me a hundred percent.
It doesn't satisfy me either, uh, if we have a fire chief, if he views it as being a danger, is it not his job to take care of it? I mean, I don't know.
I think that's fuzzy as well, because I think it's more of a bylaw question. It, because if it isn't allowed, then our bylaw people should go in there and tell this property owner. And anybody else who's got a pizza oven in the backyard to get rid of it. The fire department's job is to put fires out, you know?
Yeah, but he obviously knows something that we, is concerning him.
So, I've been the beneficiary of at least one of those pizza ovens. And it seemed entirely safe to me, it's not the kiln you're talking about, but. Yeah, if we were dealing with this from the town's point of view, I'm not aware of any bylaw that either allows or disallows.
Like a smoker, right?
But it'd, yeah, like a smoker, but it, it'd be similar, I'm sure we have a bylaw about open fire pits, you know, that it has to be in a steel.
We do with water and everything available.
You know, it may not hurt to just look at those provisions for a fire pit and just. Like, in other words, it may help our fire department. If in our language about fire pits, you could include things like pizza ovens, and just say, look, they have to be. Cuz we don't wanna regulate everything that goes on people's backyards.
Triggers are pretty big.
On the other hand, you want safety, right?
On the other hand, safety is our first obligation, that's why I said, we could have Mr. Card look at it and just see. If there is something, maybe we say, look, you know.
So, if I can speak to this, so I think this was just, Counselor Granger and I were talking about it. I think that, um, our secretary has just, that final sentence is, yeah, it's misspoken. It was, we talked about it, asked if there were problems, we didn't see that there were any. Danny was looking into it because of the fire side of it, and that's where it was left, so it wasn't on us.
No, no.
We will not be checking pizza.
Honestly, counselors, I knew that it could not be, but I was a little surprised to find that in minutes.
Adjust it in the minutes.
Okay.
I have a question about the same committee. Um, and it's a budgeting question, so when we signed our agreement with the county, our turnover agreement. We, we had some money budgeted for a new fire truck. Does that change any of that, given our agreement with them?
So, in absence of it right in front of me, I think I.
Detail, but just conceptually.
So, no, the, it still says that we're responsible for a certain percentage of capital and, and then. Right now, it's a certain percentage of operating until they kinda get a year under their belts and see what that invoice should look like. But we are still obligated for a percentage of operating, we're still budgeting in the three year operating for transfers to reserves. For a, a certain amount to meet that obligation.
But doesn't this, cuz I think we had said, well, this is for a new fire truck, but really, it should be whatever their capital requirements are. That's our contribution, right? In other words, we wouldn't specifically earmark it for that or not?
I think it is specifically earmarked for a truck.
It is.
We always used to.
I'm saying, I think it is, but I'm asking, should it be, is my question. So, in other words, we, we're thinking, hey.
No, I see what you're saying.
New fire truck.
Yeah.
If we're not in charge of it anymore, it's really them deciding whether we need a fire truck or not, and then we just have a blanket.
Right.
Or a category of, of contribution toward that.
I, if I might, Mayor, I think, I, I think that can definitely work. One of the things I've noticed is that the cost for the new fire trucks is so extreme. That our reserves have not been able to contemplate anything above and beyond the trucks. Like, those have just gotten out of hand. Um, you're gonna start to see that manifest in communities that simply cannot turn over equipment. Communities are gonna start running older equipment because the, the prices have just gotten, I mean, we're gonna be paying a million dollars for a fire truck here in a few years. Which is just getting outrageous.
I just wanted to make sure that with that new arrangement, that our budget then dovetailed into that.
Right.
Agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if I can, that the agreement doesn't let us off the hook in terms of our proportion of some of those costs. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying if, if we specifically tag, this is for a fire truck. As opposed to whoever else they might need.
Yeah, it's.
I just wanna make sure they're harmonized as all.
Yeah, cuz we budgeted that way, as specifically a fire truck.
Essentially, they will need to prioritize their capital expenditure. And if you talk to the fire chief, it always will be, let's keep our trucks.
Uh, agreed, and I'm not suggesting we don't, I, I just wanna make sure that going forward, that how we internally.
No.
Do our budgeting matches our obligations under that agreement, cuz before we didn't have.
And if I could add, Mayor, you know, having wa- watched over the evolution of this new agreement. Uh, there will be a learning curve and some growing pains and some differences, but I think. The way, the way it was set up by the original consultant.
but I think the way, the way it was set up by the original consultant and between, particularly between the county and the town, you know, we, we've sort of talked a lot of these things through, but the proof will be in the pudding and a year from now, after one year, under nuances that require some adjustment, that's all. But I think it's in pretty good shape.
Now, there is something interesting regarding what the county is proposing through your board is to have the position of the fire chief extended to a full-time position as regional DEM. And there was something else that it calls that, I don't remember exactly. I don't have it under my nose now.
So it says, it says, the budget and bylaws will be passed out. Okay, it says Murray advised that soon a full-time position for fire chief, DEM, and other duties as required will be advertised.
So that's what I was wondering. Do you have an update regarding that? You didn't get any update?
No, Murray literally just came to the meeting, gave us the heads up. It's our first time we've talked, sat down and talked about it. So, no, we have no other information.
All right. Well, if it is it, we will consider...
I'll make a motion.
Yes, forgets another.
I have a question. So, I, it's just a simple question and it, maybe a stupid question. So I noticed when I was going through the committee reports that many of the committees start with prayer. Why? Okay, so why? Why?
This is not a federal response.
So we, I mean, like, we don't start with prayers. Schools don't, don't have prayers anymore. Public meetings don't have prayers anymore. Why are some committees having prayer? Like, it, like, I think it's great. I, I just wonder...
They're choosing to.
Outside federal jurisdiction.
That's right. Whether they want to or not.
It's the foundation of this prayer form.
Yep, it is. That's all it is.
I mean, a scout meeting starts with a prayer. It's outside the federal jurisdiction.
Counselor Kelly?
I'll make a motion to the long break for thirty to forty-five minutes.
Okay. So, we have finished pretty well, all the items of the town council up to now. What is left for us is confidential items that we will have to go in close session for. Inter-municipal matter, land sale and CEO evaluation. It's a goal that Jeff intends to present to council for the next year. So, with that said, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you who are here.
Okay, let's have a motion to Councilor Kenley.
Yep, that, motion to reconvene.
I'm in favor. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to deal with the remuneration policy.
Remuneration.
And we need a motion to Councilor, Councilor Granger is going to do that for us.
I want to find the numbers here. Is it by name?
Councilor Granger.
Pay by meeting.
Can I call it option B?
If you'd like, it is the one that's in front of it.
Oh, so you've. Oh, okay, so then B is here and it does not include the.
No, no. The go first.
All right, so it's quite simple then. I, I would move that we adopt uh the remuneration of council policy as presented this date.
I was gonna say, do I need to bring up my concern vote?
Committee's or no?
Go ahead.
My only concern, now that I thought about this, was um myself, I think I probably, not to my, any fault of my own, but I probably participated on the least amount of committee meetings, just based on my lodge is once a month and then everything else is basically quarterly or as is with the golf. That's like, say maybe quarterly. So I guess future, like, is it fair for that counselor to do, only get paid for ten meetings because that's all they're, they're assigned to where this one maybe has twenty that's been assigned. That's my only really amount that I've looked at.
All right, so uh Councilor Kenley, if I can kind of give an idea of the way it can be done. The next mayor will make the assignments and that is something the next mayor will do. And, and be able to uh try to equalize as much since the remuneration is done differently. But there is certain amount of uh committees that are a little bit more touchy than others, are the ones who require a requisition or, or money that we have to give to those committed to.
She can look at it yearly too.
And so that is something that I think the next mayor has a privilege to do.
That was just a concern, like, not that.
And that's something.
We're not doing it for the money, but maybe it's.
I mean, for you this time around, we knew it was not easy for you to always be available. And so I was mindful of that, knowing that the way we were paid was different. Yes.
Um, I think the next mayor, I think she will really be aware of this and if this doesn't work for us, then the council of the day will change it. Is, is how I think. I think this is what's presented for today and we're gonna try this out. But if this, if this doesn't seem, if I don't think that this is um is working, then we're gonna change it.
Awesome, thank you.
Is what I think.
Okay, so we have that motion, we voted on it, not yet. I'm in favor? Okay, so now we can go in procession. Please.
Council, we, we.
Oh yes, that's right.
It's not much and it's probably maybe more clutter than anything, but we may get some certificates of your time on council. But Councilor Granger, that one is for you. You tried to do with some of you a cumulative times on council.
Sixty-five years.
Your retirement package.
And if we have any of the things wrong or we're missing something or something about the belt money, just we can change it.
I think that's very thoughtful.
I think we need another line in there, but we got it all in, I think.
You missed two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one.
That's wonderful.
Thank you, guys.
One just before us.
Yep, that's right.
Yours is on there. All of your two thousand. Two thousand seventeen to two thousand, it's all on there?
Oh, I needed that one. We'll have to fix two of them.
Because I was on twice.
Yes, I'll get it again. Good, this is why we're looking them over.
I mean, thank you. I love it.
That's very thoughtful.
Very thoughtful.
I asked to be communicative because I say I can carry on a heavy mole. I've already three bracketed and I'm sickly. I don't need another.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you.
If I can, um I would just like to give a heartfelt thank you to everyone that's sitting on this board. It's been a pleasure working with you for the last four years. I've learned lots. I've um, I've worked for and against some of you and uh still been friends and I respect the tar out of you. And Mayor, um I've enjoyed working with you for the last eight years. I've learned a lot. And um my hat's off to you for all your hard work that you've done for the town of Cardston and um your heart and soul that you've poured into this, so I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and you guys were awesome to work with. I really have enjoyed. I enjoy good discussion, I enjoy good rebuttal, I enjoy trying to figure out how we're going to solve the issue. And you know, by golly, we always manage to solve the issue. Sometime it took us two months, right Joshua? My gosh. And I must honestly say, hats off to Jeff. You are an amazing CEO. I have totally appreciated the way you have grown. Jeff and I almost started at the same time and so I have seen him grow and my issue was always make sure Jeff said you get all the education you can get. We'll put it in your package. We want you to get that education. And that served you well and it has served us very well. And I'm really happy that was something that was very clear to me that needed to happen for you to be successful. And Joshua, thank you, and I kept on saying to Jeff, make sure he goes and get the same education as you got so that you can carry on your career at the highest level if possible. And Jill is not there, but if Jill was there, I would say it was amazing to see her as a payable clerk when I came in. And to see her, how she little by little took more and more responsibility and never was comfortable in any responsibility, but always was willing to assume them and learn. And it's rather an amazing journey I've seen her go through. So kudos to Jill too, you can pass that on. And Sham, well, you put up with us. All, all the misery that we had to put with, and you put up with me a lot, looking at all the details. The typos and all that, I think at the beginning he was going to, to say who the heck is that idiot that's always correcting me? But we finally learned to accept that that's the way I am, so thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and when you were on the power helping us with that, you did fantastic stuff for us and I appreciated that very much. So thank you. And all what you do around the office in term of media, it's good for us. So keep it up. I'm sure Councilor Brown as a mayor is going to be on your, on your back a lot for media coverage, much more than I was.
Yeah, sounds like to, you know, because I'm not returning and hopefully a couple of you are, especially that. Um, just want to say thank you. It was uh quite the four years that I have spent. It was not a bucket list thing for me and I, like I have said many times, I never planned on being on council, so it was a real learning curve for me. I appreciate the patience uh with some of you while I was trying to figure out what the devil um MOU was and RFD and you guys were speaking Greek and I you know, I, I, I love, I appreciated your patience. I really liked serving my citizens of Cardston, the community and um getting to know everyone and to work with uh Jeff and then Josh, who has become a favorite. Like Jeff. And Sham, um you know, and all of the office staff, you know, they're all great and all the public works people. It was, it was really good to um get to know everyone and um it was a good experience. I, I'm glad I did it. And um I just wish you all well in your future and I plan to watch baseball.
I go to Seattle.
Having to watch it on my phone now.
And uh please remember on our October sixteenth, I'm hosting an open house for all the staff and council at the um senior center. From twelve to two, Karen's will see is doing soup and sandwich and, and squares. I don't know exactly what it will look like. But if you can come, come on over and uh drop in, grab some to eat and it's a nice way to say goodbye for all of us who won't be returning to all the staff and enjoy that.
I hope we're going around the room. Do you want to take your turn or should I?
Go ahead, I'm.
So I, I just want to say again how much I've enjoyed, like genuinely enjoyed working with each one of you. It's just been a highlight for me. And I, I look up to you and admire the different qualities that you've brought to the table and I've tried to be more like you guys and I'm a better person for it. And uh you know, I thought of our greatest accomplishment. I think it's not the Jay Granger sewer treatment plant. I think it's, I think it's that we've, we've been able to do everything we've done without becoming divided. You know, like even the day after, we're not divided. And I think we're able to do all the things we did without dividing the community. To me, that's just commendable that you collectively have done that. And that's, that really speaks to your character. And if I were to give advice to those of you returning, I thought, what would advice would I give? I thought I'm not really in a position to give advice, so I'll say, I'll give you some advice to pass along to the new members of council. And that would be remember who's not in the room. When you're making your decisions, there's always people who aren't here and, and they may not be here for a host of reasons, right? They might be too timid, they might not feel sophisticated enough. They might just be trusting you to do what's right, but if you, there's always someone here who's you know, representing one position, but try to remember those who aren't here. And put them right into your equation when you make those decisions. You could pass that along to the new members of of council, that's the advice that I would give. And again, just thank you to everyone, thank you, you guys. You know, I, I look forward, this is my night out. I really looked forward. I know that says something about my life.
I'm so sorry.
And, and I appreciate, you know, you guys accommodating my, my concussion. It was so hard to prepare. And uh you guys just did that, I appreciate it.
You know something, I really appreciate your comments and everything you brought to the table. Lots of wisdom, lots of wisdom all around. And I really think that to go along with the advice, I think what we have done well, we were principle based. When you base your principles, your decision on principles and stick to your principles, you're doing much better as a council. And I think that is so important, not to let the friendships, the acquaintances, whatever, get in the mix of your decision mix making because this time you do this way, then somebody else will sway you another way. It's too difficult to please everybody, but principle based, that can never fault you.
Mayor, when I was making my list of what would I advise somebody, that was my number two thing.
Well, there you go.
Always look for the principle behind what you're doing.
There you go. Thank you. There we go.
I'll just speak one, just thanks to everyone. And it's crazy to think that I was just a twenty-nine-year-old kid when I first started. Well, I put my application in to run and I thank you all for putting up with me and it was always my goal to maybe inspire a little bit of younger generations to get into politics a little bit. Um maybe just a different point of view from things, maybe the status quo, how it was and and so I hope future councils might have some more younger people on them. And I do want to thank all you though, just for putting up with me in the beginning and me learning and I'm glad that I've been able to be here to bring a younger voice to the table and two kids later and four years and we're here, so. There we go.
We're glad you, we're glad you did.
And Mayor Brown, if you want somebody to write your newsletter.
No, not me.
You, you can pick it.
Maggie and I have been here for a lot of years.
That might be.
In this chamber, we've been here for a lot of years.
Yeah.
And we don't always get along, we've talked about this. Uh what I appreciate about this council is sometimes we got darn right heated with each other, but the next day the respect's back and away we go. We're we're never gonna agree on everything, but we've always respected each other's decisions uh for or against, it doesn't really matter. That's democracy. I remember uh my first term. Good old Dr. Russell, love that guy. He's still kicking around eh, and uh he would, he had some pretty intense ideas that the other five, six never really saw the vision apparently. So he'd say, oh, I'm getting tired of, I said it in one night, he says, I'm getting tired of getting up about vote a six to one. I just said, Doc, that's democracy. And that's what it is. You got seven people on purpose or seven people. So we can come to a decision either four to three or seven nothing. So I appreciate your candor and I appreciate your hard work. This is one of the hardest working councils I've been on. There's been on some that, not so much. But uh hope you guys do well wherever you're off to, maybe I'll be spending more time on holidays too. We'll see what Monday brings, so.
Um, I've appreciated all of you. I've appreciated my time here. You know, going to some of the conferences and the uh talking to people, you know, outside this room. And even, you know, the the other counselors at at the county. I think that we are the envy of a lot of other councils and organizations in terms of what we do. I've seen a lot of councils come and go in my time and I think this one is one of the best that I've seen for all the reasons that you guys have talked about. And I I think we're, people are envious of of us because of our wonderful superb administration. You guys are top, top flight. And I've I've, I've been watching municipal government for over forty-five years now. So um thank you so much and and for for helping us and guiding us and and uh giving us a toolbox to work with. Um, I think we're, we're the envy of a lot of the other government organizations because of our success. That stems from the individuals and who we are and the respect that we have for each other. And I'm I'm glad I participated in it. Thank you.
And life is good. Thank you. We will carry on.
I make a motion to go in closed session.
I'm in favor? I'm glad.